Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April 26, 2016. The opening prayer will be given by Pastor Will Marotti of the New Life Church. Please rise.
Let's pray together, shall we? Our Heavenly Father, God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, we come to you tonight with Thanksgiving and praise. We praise you, God, for the gift of life. Most of us woke up under our own power today with no external aids, were able to function, move about, think, perform the duties that we have before us. We thank you for that. We thank you for the privilege of living in the greatest country in the world, where even amidst a very contentious and raucous election season, we, the people, even here today in Connecticut, we, the people, get to decide who will lead and represent us. We thank you for that. We thank you for this group of elected officials tonight. We thank you for their effort, their sacrifice, their labor. We pray that you bless them, give them unity, give them wisdom, as they endeavor to lead us and help make the town of Wallingford the best place it can possibly be for the residents of the town of Wallingford. Bless them tonight as they meet. Thank you again for the privilege of living here, and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Love the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marrone.
Here.
Chortel.
Sullivan.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry. And Chairman Savoni.
Here. Counselor Chortel did advise me that he is on his way and should be here soon. Counselor Zandry also advised me that he is dealing with the woes of public transportation, and last I heard, his train wasn't moving. But he will make every effort to be here. With that, on to item three.
Mr. Chairman, a move. We approve and accept consent agenda items A through U.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda passes. I am, I'm going to jump ahead on the agenda to item 10, and at this point, we will head to the hallway outside the chambers for the unveiling of a plaque. Yes. All right, here in the, in the hallway, we do have this plaque. It's covered in wrapping paper and ribbon, and has the seal of Wallingford on it right now. Mayor, would you like to help us out here?
All right. This is a great occasion. We do not often name the council chamber, and probably in government, this is the area that best symbolizes the functioning of democracy, where laws are made, where appropriations are approved. It is the heartbeat of what we see as democracy and the election of officials who provide those judgments and take that direction. So it is a delight to recognize, other than Bob Parisi, who was here with his wife Joan, Bob represents 37 years as a councilman, but well beyond that are his many other contributions in the community, as a businessman, as a contributor to so many civic organizations, a person who understands all of the various, what shall we say, the various melodies and strains of living in Wallingford. And we appreciate the experience you represent and what you have brought to the decision-making for the town of Wallingford. So Bob, we ask you to come forward, and if you would remove the paper from this plaque, I hope it says what it's supposed to say. They wouldn't let me look at it.
Is it on there good, right?
If you can just.
That's all right.
There it comes.
Oh, wow.
Look at that. And as all can see, Robert F. Parisi, Town Council Chambers, dedicated December 15, 2015. Congratulations, Bob. Thank you for all you've done.
I just want to thank the town council and the mayor. This is certainly an honor, one I'd never expected. There's only one thing I didn't do. I should have changed those damn chairs in there. But my theory was if it wasn't too comfortable, people wouldn't stay too long. Well, now I'm stuck in the damn chairs that I stuck everybody else with. But other than that, it was, it was a beautiful run, and it's nice to get an honor for doing something that you truly enjoy doing yourself. So I loved every, almost every minute of it, but there were some trials. Overall, I'm happy, and I thank you all, especially my colleagues who voted for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's not much more to say about your years of service. I think you've set records that will probably not be broken for a very long time. So we think this is an honor befitting your leadership. Thank you very much, Chairman Parisi.
Thank you very much.
With that, we can head back in. no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period. Mr. Kennedy.
Let me give you a little bit of chronology here. Back March the 8th, I appeared in front of council, and I asked about the financials and the current financials, and you told me that, yes, they were available, and that I could call Mr. Boz and get them. I called Mr. Boz, we had a long chat, and he basically said that I could view them in Town Hall and then make copies of whatever I wanted. That was on the 11th of March. On the 24th of March, I hadn't heard back from Mr. Boz, and I started to read the FOI rules and regulations, and I realized that a citizen can ask for any information they want that's kept on a computer in electronic format, so I sent an FOI in requesting that. On the 24th of March, Mr. Boz replied that, yes, he was working on it, and it'd be about a week or so before I would get any information. The 31st of March, you know, this is already three and a half weeks after my initial request. I, sorry, I apologize. On the 15th of April, which is now five weeks after the thing, I called Finance to get an update because I hadn't heard from Mr. Boz, and the phone rang and rang and rang, and I called like five different times, and I never got anybody to answer the phone. So I called the mayor's office, and I said, "Nobody in Finance, could you please make sure that Mr. Boz gives me a call?" And they took the message, they took my phone number and everything else. Today's the 26th, or, yeah, 26th, and I still haven't heard. I've been asking since the 8th of April to look at current financials, and I've heard in chambers a number of times that I can come to Town Hall. I've asked to do that, and they told me they weren't available. I asked for it electronically, they told me it was coming. So now I'm here, and I'm saying, okay, I still don't have financials. I wanted them so that I could compare current numbers to the budget cycle that you guys are, you gentlemen, are in the process of looking at. And since I don't have anything, and you're probably going to vote on the budget sometime in the next week or so, a couple days, two weeks, whatever it is, it would be nice to be able to put my hands and analyze the current financials. So my question is, is what do I need to do to look at current financials?
Mr. Boz is not here tonight. It sounds to me like you've done what you can do, but the mayor is here, he's heard you, and I'm sure he's noted your remarks.
Yeah, I think, I think, I don't know what this story is as far as mailing them out. If you want to see current financials, certainly as he stated, you can come in, and they would be shown to you.
But that's what I, excuse me.
But I don't know what the, what the issue is with regard to converting them to some other form. I, I don't know, and I haven't spoken to Mr. Boz about it. I will speak to him. He's unable to be here tonight. I should see him tomorrow. I'll speak to him, but I can't speak to that. I can tell you that, obviously, they are available if you come to Town Hall and take a look at them. On that, I can't answer what the issue might be.
I have been told that they were not available, that they, that he would have to print them and get them ready and blah, blah, blah. You know, he went through a whole explanation of what he had to do in order to get them ready. And I realize that the electronic format is something that is above and beyond the financials, but I wanted to see the financials. And like, this is, this is six, eight weeks.
I, I know in the last week or so, Mr. Boz has been definitely, as I have been, wrapped up in this whole issue of what's happening at the state level. So whether that has interrupted his ability to do other things, I can't answer, but I know we have been spending a lot of time dealing with how we're going to respond to the reduction, the proposed reduction in state aid to municipalities. So that's all I can tell you at this point.
May I allow a second question?
Uh.
I can go sit down and come back if you want me to.
Mr. Gross is ready to yield to you, so let me just ask, does anybody else have a comment, question?
My second question is that, you know, Mr. Mayor, on a number of occasions, you've basically stated in this chamber that whenever we have a problem communicating or reaching anybody, to call your office, and I did do that, and I left a very detailed message relating to talking to Mr. Boz, and, you know, that's, it was 10 days ago, and I still don't, I haven't, I've never heard a word, never got a call back, even from his secretary, who could say, "Mr. Boz is busy, sorry, he can't call you for the next two weeks or something." So again, I followed the procedure that you've laid out a number of occasions, and it's not working. What?
I'm glad to know, and I will look into it. I didn't know until now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. A question. I don't know what exactly Mr. Kennedy's looking for, but every month, don't you get a printout or an email with the financials?
We don't, we don't get an email.
What, do you, you get them printed?
Yes.
So it's a, how big of a, what do you get every month, then? How many pages? I would say it's measured in inches?
I wouldn't measure it in inches. It might be a centimeter thick. Sorry if the metric is throwing you off.
No, I know. I know what centimeters are. I did science.
You probably use them daily.
Centimeters?
Yeah.
Well, I don't do science every day, but yeah, I don't measure in centimeters, but in science you do. All right, no, I was just curious. I just had, I was just perplexed at the last council meeting. This is for the council. And on the Center Street condos, on the, taking away the affordable waiver, or you took away the affordability to buy it that way, I still don't understand the reasoning behind it. Is there anybody that can explain it in layman terms why that was removed?
I don't want to spend a lot of time on it because we spent almost two hours on it that night, but.
Layman terms.
Layman terms is the, my understanding is the perception, the majority is that the developer spent 18 months marketing those units to limited response, sold one, had several offers where, good faith offers, where buyers wanted to buy, and they were overqualified under the affordability standard. And I, I think that we who voted in favor believed that, you know, it was time to release those units to the free market and not to hamstring the developer further with that restriction.
And you saw in the Record Journal, within days after that, North Haven doing the same thing. But if you've looked at those condos, those condos were substantially bigger and so forth than the ones in Wallingford, at approximately the same price range. I'm, I'm, just from the, well, it's been set after, I'm just perplexed at the whole thing that the prices has never come down, you didn't ask for any material on it, yet the waiver, because that's something that's important to people, the affordability to keep people in Wallingford that want to stay here, for the retirees and so forth that want to stay here, yet you take away the affordability of it. If, you know, you could think that maybe they are overpriced for the market. If you didn't reduce the pricing, I mean, that, the market in Wallingford is plummeting. You can, well, just look at the property transfers into town here. There's a couple attorneys up there. I'm sure you've done a closing or two, hopefully, and you would notice the, and didn't move once on that. I'm just, it just doesn't seem right that there wasn't something, there was, I don't know, it's just, that one just seemed to gnaw at me, that there was something wrong with that, that there was released. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Going once, going twice. There being no more, I will close the public question and answer period. On to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding tentative agreement for United Public Service Employees Union Local 424 Unit 30, Wallingford Board of Education Food Service Contract effective September 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017, Board of Education.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sal Menzo, Superintendent, Wallingford Public Schools, and I have with me Cindy Leavlette, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel. Cindy's going to walk you through the process.
Terrific, thank you.
Tonight, I'm bringing before you the Wallingford Education Food Service Contract that we have a tentative agreement on. The contract has a duration of two years, although the first year of that contract is retroactive, so it would be the current year that we are just about ending. The salary in each of the two years is at a 2% general wage increase. There are no steps in the food service contract, so it's the straight 2% general wage increase. The insurance facts that we have worked on would be to reduce the waiver, and we successfully reduced the waiver from 30% to 20%. We also have eliminated what we've come to call in the, call in this town as double-dipping. So any person who is taking our insurance cannot take it if they have a spout, or they can't, who, anybody who's taking the waiver cannot have somebody else in town who is covered as a Board of Ed employee or as a town employee. The waiver was sunset for new hires in a previous contract. I know that's something that the town council often asks about, so that is already gone. One of the things that we were able to do to try and change the costs of the insurance plan were to increase deductibles, so a little bit of design change in the sense that the office visits, urgent care, ER visits, outpatient visits, inpatient visits, and hospitalization will all be increased significantly in the deductible. The premium cost share is increased to 5% upon ratification. Quite honestly, because it's so late in the year, that 5% probably will not be seen. By the time this is ratified, the year will be close to over. And to 7% effective July 1, 2016. There's a three-tier formulary prescription with a maximum $2,000 yearly max, and we have added in some language on required training to codify things that are necessary to have the employees prepared health, safety-wise, to meet the needs of students in serving food.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Marrone?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Cindy.
Hi, Jeff.
One quick question for you on the, the insurance benefit. I see that the cost share went up, which is certainly good for us, and this seems like a fair contract overall. My question's about the, the plan design, or any plan design changes. I know some of the other units that the board has negotiated with went to an HSA, and that would be, you know, substantial savings for the employees, so I just wonder if that was brought up at all, or if that, if the board had any.
This particular union was not at all interested in a plan design change to the HSA.
Okay. Unfortunate for the workers.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did, on management side, was it suggested that there was a change to the HSA?
That was one of the proposals to try to switch to an HSA, but as I said, this union was not at all interested. We weren't able to negotiate that.
Would never, knowledge of the process that never got to the rank and file, it was rejected by leadership of, of the union?
I don't know what their practices were. I know what we discussed in negotiations. I don't know if they brought it back to the membership. If they didn't, that would be on their side what they did, but it was something that was discussed in negotiations.
The, um, the break period just jumped out at me. I'm used to people having 15-minute breaks. Is there a reason why it's a 10-minute? It just didn't.
I don't know the answer to that.
It's probably the way it's always been. It just.
It's not been modified over the last few contracts.
Um, the unaccumulated sick leave, I know we recently had a contract that that was capped, what, what they could get paid out for, but it, it doesn't appear that there's a, there's a cap here. Am I incorrect?
What article are you looking at, Mr. Fishbein?
Um, 9.3. Unused accumulated sick leave upon retirement.
I think in.
It looks like it's accumulated to 90 days.
In 9.2.
The, um, in 9.5, parant C, if the assistant super has reasonable cause to believe that sick leave is being abused, why is the town responsible to pay for the medical exam? Why isn't it split between both, or?
That's something that we could look to for a future negotiation. It's not something that we approached in this particular negotiation, but I can certainly add that to my notes.
And is there, I, I didn't see a procedure, I, I might have missed it, as to how that medical exam comes about? It, it just appears to be laying there by itself. Is it tied to some other paragraph? That's all it says. "In any instance where the assistant superintendent personnel has reasonable cause to believe sick leave is being abused, the town shall pay the cost of the medical examination." There's no, I didn't see a paragraph that says, you know, "Medical examination shall show whatever, detail whatever."
No, there's nothing additional to it other than that, and I've not had to implement this clause during my tenure, so I don't have firsthand experience with it. But I would think that in this case, if I've seen, seeing abuse or cause for, to me, a cause where I believe that there is abuse, that then I would be the one requesting the medical examination. It would seem to me that that would be why I would pay for it at that point in time as the town. But I certainly did add it to my notes to look to that as a, as a future potential area for negotiation.
That would explain why it would get paid for perhaps by the town, but there's, there's, there's like no procedure. It's a sentence that just sits there with no, you know, does it have to be noticed? Does there, you know, is there, there's nothing.
Right, so the procedure is not delineated in this contract.
Well, I, I do want to just state for clarification purposes that when you read the first sentence of this section 9.5, it says, "A medical certificate acceptable to the food service director is required," and then it looks like it's progressive discipline or progressive consequences. So for any period of absence, three days, then it goes for prolonged illnesses, and then the third reason why that would be required is because the superintendent is initiating it because of abuse. So I, I think that there could be clarity. I agree with you, Counselor Fishbein, that there's, there is lack of clarity, but I think that there, the way I'm reading it is they're kind of trying to set a context with that first sentence. It's not really well-written, but again, I think that is, they're trying to set that consequence in progressive manner, that it starts off with the fact that it's the employee who has the challenge, it's a prolonged challenge, and then the administration feels that it's an abuse. But I agree that we do need to tighten it up, but.
Yeah, I still say that that sentence sits by itself because the, the other provisions talk about conditions precedent. In A, it talks for, I mean, absence consisting of three or more consecutive working days. In B, it talks about prolonged illnesses or injuries.
And in C, it says because there's the belief on the part of administration that sick leave is being abused. Just following that same.
Right, so in my mind, I'm thinking, then, so we've asked for a medical certificate, the certificate, somebody's had either three day, three consecutive days or more, or a prolonged illness, that we don't have a supporting note to go with, the doc, the employee doesn't produce the note, then at that point, it gives me an opportunity to say, then we are going to require a medical examination.
So just to take that a step further, in A, who your example was, three days or more, a medical certificate is required.
Correct.
And?
On the onus of the employee.
Okay.
That's their, his or her responsibility.
So you're telling me that if the employee does not meet their onus in paragraph A, your only remedy is to then seek your own exam?
That's not necessarily the first remedy. The, the only, the remedies would be progressive discipline, so there would be, there's a variety of opportunities there, but again, I think that that would be, the first three days is not considered abuse. I think as you move forward, then it becomes more of an issue of abuse. But I think, again, what you're getting at, which we see, is that there's obviously some need to revise this language to make it clearer, because I think it's oftentimes, and you know as an attorney, we try to use the fewest amount of words, but oftentimes we lose then the meaning with the fewest amount of words. I think that's what happened here.
Agreed. The tax shelter annuities that are referenced in 17.5, what is that program? Because I don't. Because I don't see any financial reference in...
Those would be part of the town's plan that all classified employees have access to, but it's not anything that the employer pays. So it'd be a full employee contribution. We can get you more information on that. That's been an existing part of this contract for years beyond our tenure in the district. But the town sets up opportunities for employees to establish funds if they chose to do so, but that'd be a separate entity. It wouldn't be reimbursable, it wouldn't be matching, it would be outside of those, but we give access. And that came about, I believe, in my last district, probably around in 2006, 2007. We had to afford all employees opportunities, access to those funds through GAZB, I think, 43 and 44. There was a part of, it was unfunded liabilities, but then as an offshoot of that, we had to offer employees opportunities to save for retirement, not contribute to it for them, but to give them an opportunity to access to that.
Okay. Once again, I mean...
It needs to be...
That needs clarification, because...
This is a very, very bare-bones contract, as you're alluding to, and I think that's an opportunity for expounding upon that in the next iteration, which will be quickly, because this contract ends next year, so this is good that we're getting this feedback.
So you're saying the Board of Education itself has no...
We have no obligation.
Obligation.
Absolutely not.
Because clearly it does not say anything like that. It just says available.
Yeah, are available for...
The general government is not a party to this contract.
Yeah, so are available, but not are... It's an onus, again, the onus is on the employee to fund that tax sheltered annuity. It's not on the Board of Education. But that needs to be reworded.
The wages, the copy that I received says wages to be calculated and corrected in final version.
Right, because this is just the red line version. So in the final version, then we will update the exact wages to match the 2% increase of the general wage increase.
Is there... So when are we going to get that?
Once this fact is approved, then we'll make the final copy.
I mean, this is the first time that I've seen that we haven't gotten that. Am I incorrect?
Usually we report out to you the total cost of the compensation of the contract.
And that's on the summary page that I provided to you?
Yeah.
These are the hourly rates, but we could provide those to you. I mean, it's just, it's taking...
I just thought usually we get that, because I specifically remember, it was the teacher's contract, that I went through almost every line and did the calculation to figure out what the average was, so I definitely had that.
That may very well be, because the teacher's contract is a little different, that there's steps in that contract and there's columns, so that may very well be. In terms of these contracts, when you look at the clerical, you look at the classified employee contracts that aren't, well, clerical does have some steps to it, but a contract like this, we'll get them to you. I mean, it's a matter of just providing that information, but the total cost was presented earlier as the 4376, the first year, which is the present year we're in, and in 4464 in the second year, which we'll be going into.
Yeah, it's just easier when I see the whole thing. And last but not least, the...
Just if I may, we should also let you know how many we have of each of these, because if you're trying to do the math, you're going to, just giving you the hourly rate isn't going to help you.
I actually, I didn't make copies of that, but I do have a copy of that.
We'll provide that for you.
Great, that'd be fantastic. Last but not least, this language in 4.3 about people that opt out of the union, and I know, we have talked about this, this is not the current state of the law. So there is no reference here to chargeable expenses and non-chargeable expenses. What you're representing to the membership is if they opt out of the union, they still have to pay full union dues. That is not the current status of the law. So I would just recommend that you have your lawyers look at this language and accurately depict what people can and can't do, so...
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Councilor Chertel.
If Councilor Fishbein is heading west on a train going 80 miles an hour, and Councilor Testa's going east at the same speed, using common core math, who gets there first? I'm just kidding.
Mr. Morone.
Okay. Actually, I want to echo something Mr. Morone said. I'm disappointed, we didn't get the HSA even offered, and I, a lot of my comments, they're not, I know you guys inherited a lot of these things, they're not really directed at you, but they're just my observations.
Sure.
The first observation is, and we talked about changing the formulary to adding a $2,000 max, so what was the old plan, unlimited? Or was there a different max?
No, there was not prescription coverage in the former plan.
Okay, okay, that's, okay. Then that, good. I think, so I look at the savings from the waiver, and I guess what I struggle with, when the town had a fully insured insurance plan, that made perfect sense to me, you know, fully insured, it works like your car insurance. You pay a premium, and whether you get into an accident or not, you, you know, that's what you pay. So there is a savings, I see you're chipping away at it, but when you're self-insured, I mean, it's really, that $8,200 is kind of a, I don't want to say a fake number, but it's a fake number, because you could get somebody who's very healthy, and all you're saving is, you know, the administrative fee, or get someone who's really sick. So I guess that was just another observation. And I guess that leads to my last question, which is, I know you're chipping away at the waiver. Have we ever gone to arbitration since the town went to self-insurance to see if that would stand up in an arbitration? Because I don't see how that would stand up. I don't...
We have not gone to arbitration on that. I think that that would be something to consider, especially with a larger union. Not that it probably, in the grand scheme of things, if you got it happen with a small union, then it might help you with the other premiums.
I know, but it's better to start with the larger.
Yeah.
And I don't know, do you know if it's gone to arbitration prior to our tenure?
Well, that would have been when we were self, not self-insured, when we were paying the premiums, so I don't believe it had been.
Okay, I mean, my, so I've, I think this, I've been part of, I think, three, we've had three contracts presented to us since I've been my four months on the council, and I've had issues with all of them, and basically, there's some of the same issues I have with this one. And I know there's the 2% thing, and I know that that, when I was on the board, we talked about the town council wants 2%. I'm not clear where that came from. It's passed down from generation to generation. It wasn't in my orientation packet, but for me, I would like the town council to sort of set a different standard. I would vote for a 3% contract if it had the HSA and didn't have the waiver. I mean, there's, sort of me, the 2% thing is not a big deal. So I just, that's what I struggle with. It has nothing to do with the job you guys did. You worked hard, I know you did. I know you're chipping away. You're kind of dealt a tough hand with these, but that's just where I'm coming from with some of this stuff. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Sullivan.
Arbitration always concerns me. Much of what I do for a living is centered on labor, and arbitration always comes down to ability to pay. And going after this waiver, I think, in my professional opinion, would be a losing Around the sick leave, I'm not going to dwell on it, but I understand where the union was at when this was negotiated. If I'm out three days, and you're going to require, I bring in medical documentation, well, you're going to pay it, pay the bill, bottom line. FMLA, when somebody's out three days, when somebody's out any day, I'm sure FMLA is offered. If the FMLA is approved, there's no corrective action, I hope, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there's always that FMLA caveat hanging out there, state and federal. Okay. Look, I don't have a problem with this, and I think we have some representatives from 424 Unit 30 in the audience, and those of you that have been with us for a while know that six years ago, we argued over 10 cents an hour for you folks, and it was just excruciating to sit here and argue for 10 cents. I think this is a fair contract. I think I would ask my representatives why they didn't look into the HSA, though. And this is from somebody who's normally on your side. Why? It could have been a benefit, and it could have changed or altered the negotiation somewhat. That would have been beneficial. So I think that's something you need to take to your leadership team. But I have no issues with this. Again, Superintendent Menzo and Cindy, you're going down the right path on these. Little by little, you're picking away. You're getting concessions, they're getting some benefits, and it's a win-win. So right now, I think you did a great job on this one.
Thank you.
You bet. That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Mayor?
I just want to make this comment, and that is that you've got to watch wages, because wages, and this isn't true, I mean, it's not the same impact with every bargaining unit, but wages carries with it a potential enormous impact on pension. So you've got to watch what happens on the pension side of it when you deal with wages.
Councilor Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this contract as presented, as it's been presented to us, with any modifications that were discussed tonight.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I'm a little concerned about the language with any modifications.
Well, we talked about just getting us the information, so... All right, then, as presented. I'll do it as presented.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I guess, point of law, since the motion, I mean, I'm adverse to the motion, I'll just come out and say that publicly, but the motion itself has no effect. The only motion, my understanding, that could have an effect procedurally is a motion to reject that is passed. A motion to accept, if passed, has no effect. If the motion to accept is denied, it has no effect, and therefore...
I'm not certain about that. I think if there's a motion to accept and it fails, that it has an adverse impact on the position of the town.
No, I don't agree. I think it's just a motion to reject that is affirmatively supported by this council is my understanding. So, I mean, I'm...
But, Mr. Chairman, we've done this in the past, so, you know, maybe the Law Department is here can clear it up.
Yes. Mayor?
You've got to distinguish between an arbitration award and this is an agreement. A rejection of an agreement is that there's not an agreement. If we accept the agreement today, then that would mean that it's effective as of today, and there isn't a period of time to run before it's effective. If there's no action taken, then, what is it, 30 days? But a rejection of this agreement, then there's no agreement. So the agreement entered into the parties wouldn't be able to move forward, because there's not agreement.
So to narrow the focus of the discussion, though, the two positions that were being discussed is clearly, if the motion was to reject, and the motion to reject carries, then there's no agreement. The question was, if there's a motion to accept, and the motion to accept fails...
Well, then, the motion to accept fails, if it sits for 30 days, then it would be effective.
Okay.
But you'd wait the 30 days, and I think they would like to implement things without having to wait 30 days, but...
That clarifies that.
Further discussion in the council? Comments from the public?
Did we clarify the motion?
I'm clear. Are you in agreement with it, Councilor Sullivan?
Yeah, just to make sure that it's as presented.
Accept the contract as presented.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Certainly.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Letourneau.
Yes.
Morone.
Yes.
Chertel.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Thank you. Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Onto item seven, which is discussion and possible action regarding a letter of intent concerning the Len Lease project, which was the subject of a presentation at our last This has just been presented to the council as we arrived this evening. Attorney Farrell, would you like to be heard?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Law Department, in the person of Attorney Small, was working on this with the developer well into this afternoon. What you have is the latest version of that. It could still change, but probably what you have is substantially the way it's going to be if you choose to vote affirmatively on it. It would be, the town is binding itself to negotiate in good faith, and our hands are tied on negotiating with anyone else for the next 120 days. We don't get much money for that, $2,500, but we're not in any way bound to enter into the lease agreement. We're only saying that we're expressing our intent to move ahead and to negotiate in good faith to try to reach a lease. Money's still under discussion. Later this afternoon, it turned to that the parties would look to work out a tax agreement similar to what we did with LNS, Wallingford Energy, as versus put the assessor through, trying to come up with a depreciation on this equipment, which last meeting was pointed out, this type of equipment depreciates quite quickly. The mayor has placed it on your agenda for tomorrow night if you choose not to move forward, but they do have a short time. They have to come to an agreement with the DEP on submitting a proposal by May 4th. Probably, all you're doing is, by voting affirmatively, would be saving Attorney Small from showing up tomorrow night, but I understand the developer would come as well if you choose to put it on the agenda. But I don't think much would change, and the town is, as I said, only binding itself for 120 days and to negotiate in good faith. And by voting this, you're showing that you are interested in moving ahead. If you're interested in that, Attorney Small did draft a motion that you could entertain. Might I come up and present that to you, Mr. Chairman?
As Attorney Farrell indicated, this is on tomorrow's, tomorrow night's agenda as a placeholder in light of the fact that the material support was coming to us so late. Thank you. We do have a light agenda tonight. My other thought to consider is, we could take a brief recess to review this if we'd consider acting on it tonight. Those are my only comments at this point. With that, I go to Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, just getting it the last minute, and I was here before some other people, I haven't even looked at it. I haven't even, like, flipped through it quickly. So I'm, my preference would be to table it until tomorrow, so I'm going to make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded.
Is the motion made?
Yes, there, yes. Counselor Laffin moved to table, Counselor Zandry.
Is the motion made to approve it?
No. Tabled the agenda item.
Oh, you can table an agenda item?
Yep.
That's your only table of motion? I'm saying, procedurally, all you have to do is say we're going to do it tomorrow.
We're going to do it tomorrow.
I just, I'm talking from a part of my... You tabled motions, not agenda items. Maybe wrong.
I always thought you could do either, but...
I thought you could table discussion.
But that's because you've had a motion on the table and you had a discussion about the motion.
All right.
If you'd like, I can make the motion and then table it.
What if I call the question?
Are you calling the question?
Yes, I'm calling the question.
But that requires an extra vote, and we could just vote on the table thing and be done.
All right. The motion to table, if proper, stops discussion, so I'm going to call roll...
The motion to table, if proper, stops discussion, so I'm going to call the roll on the motion to table, please.
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Abstain.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
No.
The motion passes.
All right. Onto item eight.
Can I ask, just, are you interested in having the representative of Len Lease at the meeting?
I have questions for the Law Department. I don't see any, I skimmed through the document.
Okay, I'm not going to try to have someone here, okay.
Not hearing interest in speaking to a representative, so, okay. Onto item eight, which is a discussion and possible action with regard to technological upgrades in the Town Clerk Town Council office. Counselor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of the item is to try and bring the Town Clerk's office into line with the technologic, technology that was in the Town Council office upstairs. I've had discussions with the Town Clerk's office and the Town Clerk, and in recently recognizing that the Town Council has a technological committee, I think it's probably most appropriate that that committee take charge of this item, and therefore, Mr. Chairman, I, at this point at least, make a motion to table this matter to be possibly addressed in the future.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this item is tabled. Onto item nine, executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to section, pursuant to section one dash two hundred six D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session has moved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council meeting in executive session. Kindly clear the chambers, thank you. Call the meeting back to order, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, there being no further business on the agenda, I move, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.